As we had to split ourselves due to other eh work and commitments. Um so um I would like uh now to. And eh to 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 commence with the with the hearing itself. In terms of putting the matter on the re- on the on the on the roll um. Eh which is eh the the application again, the application eh that we received from eh Eskom. Eh in terms of um including eh an area as part of its um um eh. License for operation of the distribution eh facility. The public hearing itself was um advertised eh in various eh newspapers. And um eh stakeholders were requested to. To provide eh information that could be eh that could assist the energy regulator in. Eh in making an informed decision. So today's hearing is eh is 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 governed in terms of the NERSA. Eh rules for public hearings. It is eh conducted on that basis. Wherein we as stakeholders or provide stakeholders another opportunity to provide evidence and facts that could assist the energy regulator. To come to an informed eh decision. And and I would like to also just summarize some of the um of the um rules. Eh for purposes of ensuring a smooth eh proceeding eh in today's matter. Um all stakeholders that are going to present are required to eh make their presentations under oath. And also the members of the panel are the only um eh members that can ask questions directly to the presenters. However, if there is a member of the public that wishes to ask questions to the presenters, you can do so via. Um eh eh a submission of eh that question eh through the email that Mister Walt Tamabunda. Will they put on the chart and then you just eh put your question there. We will then look at the question and put the question to the members of the eh the the presenters. Eh please note that eh the eh this is with regards to the presenters if you have any information. Um that you consider to be. That you consider to be um confidential. Eh please let us know so that we can decide whether we still want to hear that information that is eh confidential. Eh if we do, we'll have to clear the room eh just to make sure that um. We only it's only the members of the energy regulator that eh will be eh will have access to that kind of information. Just in terms of the presenters today, we received a request eh from the applicant, which is Eskom. That is going to then do the presentation um as well as um eh city of Ekuruleni. That is also going to make eh the presentation today. Others such as observers from Eskom Ekuruleni, Renew Consulting and members of the public. Um so eh just in terms of the house rules, if you can kindly make sure that your cell phones are on silent right now. Eh so that we make sure that we. We that that the proceedings themselves are not going to be interrupted. Alright, with that, I would like then to eh invite eh Eskom if we can have eh. Eh Vusani Palandwa eh to just activate your video from Eskom. Mister Mabunda, you can just um assist those that things as yeah. Of Palandwa.
Um thank you Chair, so I can project on my side.
Alright, just to just to eh eh I'm not able to see. Alright eh, do you have any objections in taking the oath?
No, I have no objection um Chair.
May you may you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly declare that eh the evidence you're going to provide to this panel today um is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes Chair.
Okay eh please eh state your name and your designation at Eskom for the record.
Hey, my name is um Vusani Palandwa and I'm a network planning manager in Houghton Cluster.
Okay, you may then start with your presentation ma'am. You can start with your presentation, you can be me, thank you. Yeah, I can see it. Thanks, you can start.
Alright, um thank you Chair and eh good morning colleagues. My name is indicated that's Vosani Palando and I'll be taking you through the amendment of eh. Eskom Electricity Distribution License Windmill Park, which is in Boxback. Uh this is just the content of my presentation, I'll be sharing the um background, the purpose. The geographical layout and also the application details and the stakeholder that we engage. And then conclusion. So in terms of the purpose of this eh presentation, the reason why we're here as Eskom. Is that um we're here to provide a comprehensive overview of Eskom's application to amend its existing. Electricity distribution license specifically referring to Windmill Park residential development. Uh within the Eskom authorized supply area. And we're also gonna articulate the justification for incorporating this Windmill Park development into our license area. And thus demonstrating why this is this inclusion is in the best interest of the resident and the broader electricity network. We'll also present evidence of Eskom's technical capability, our operational preparedness. And also the customer service readiness, thus confirming that the. That Eskom does have the infrastructure and we also have the expertise, the systems, the resources therefore. Um which will enable us to deliver safe, reliable and efficient electricity supply to this. Uh Windmill Park development. And we're also gonna address and respond to concerns and questions. And objections that were raised by the stakeholders just to ensure that um this is transparent. And eh thus providing confidence in in our proposal. And also going to illustrate how um. How inclusion of this eh development aligns with the NERSA regulatory expectation. And sound network planning principles. So in terms of the summary of events and the compliance with this regulatory process. What happened was that eh we received eh eh application by developer. Uh Kiran Projects for thirty seven M V A to supply the new residential development in Vildevek Vildevek area. Which um relating to our network, it's in Step Down and First Upon C and C. So this development is actually located in the brownfield area. Where we've got existing eleven K V infrastructure which is already in place. And with this information, we then initiated our internal processes to evaluate. And formally include this Windmill Park within the authorized supply area. So as it as part of the required consultation, we then engaged the city of Ekuruleni. Since the development falls within the municipality municipalities boundary. And engagement is therefore necessary for supplying this area. So in terms of our engagement with um Ekuruleni, so what happens is that we had engagement in twenty twenty one. We had a initial meeting to begin the discussions on supply arrangement for this Windmill Park. And we had another follow up meeting in twenty twenty two to review the development progress. And we discussed Eskom's intended supply. And then in November twenty twenty two, then a formal correspondent was sent to. City of Ekuruleni outlining the proposed supply area for this Windmill Park. In terms of now the regulatory application process, what happened was that in October twenty twenty two, we started our own. Internal Eskom processes where we took it to our Eskom Distribution Legislation and Regulation Committee. Um so that this application can be approved for us to start with the NERSA application. Which was eventually submitted in May um this year. And the application was then formally submitted in line with the rules for licensable distribution area supply. And uh as part of the process, there was a public notice of the application which was um advertised on various newspapers. And um this was also in June so that we can then get. Inputs or any objection from the stakeholder participation. And we had a inspection in local with the regulator from NERSA. In terms of this area on its location on where is it, it's located in the. Okay, okay, this shaded part, this is the development. And then on the western and the eastern borders, you will see the Eskom line. So this blue lines are the H V lines in the area. And there is the Berry Mary's Road on the on the west. And we also have the the traction um which is your railway line um which is on the. On the north side of the development. And this actually forms the natural um boundaries between Eskom and city of Ekuruleni. And then further just eh zooming in now geographical location, you will see. Eh these are the different developments and the networks that are interlinki- that are interlinking in the. Area and the green lines um will show the eleven K V. So we do have an eleven K V then within the boundary. And then nearby eleven K V network. So in terms of the servicing of the of these areas um. You will see that the the blue, the blue shaded area, that's Eskom. Um areas that are supplied by that are serviced by Eskom. And the the red part, there is part of the development. And then then these other areas um areas there. Ekuruleni, so you will then see that um this development is falling in an area where. It's actually serviced um by Eskom at the moment and. And in order to just ensure that um we keep this this boundary and avoids crossing of of networks and hence. The application to NERSA to include it as part of a license line sensible area. And then now in terms of the application summary, um we are applying for the amendment of the license to supply. It's about eleven thousand residential units as we have received the information from the developer. And what we are then proposing as Eskom is to establish a substation which is a two by forty. And eh it's going to provide um reliable network in the area. And it's going to be integrated in the exist- existing eighty eight um K V back book. Which is uh also in the vicinity. And we are going to improve the security and network service and the issue of the tariffs will be. According to the NERSA approved um tariffs that we're going to apply. And then in terms of the advantage, uh this existing Eskom network. Will provide the most cost effective and technical variable solution. And um this solution naturally avoids duplication of infrastructure and it's going to ensure. Reliability and consistent customer service. And uh the single supplier will im- it will improve the operational safety. And the critical thing is that we're going to avoid overlapping of infrastructure. And just ensuring that we are providing a safe and a reliable um network because we won't have. Eh network crossing over where we've got both um. Both entities in the in the same area. And this this will also just ensure that our maintenance is it's coordinated. In terms of the regulatory and technical assessment, um in terms of the NERSA review criteria that we followed. There we do have the technical ability and the operational readiness eh that was in check and. We look at the least cost service provision. This is now in terms of establishing the substation and the. Proximity and network integration, we've got both the eleven K V in the vicinity and also the H V network. We, in terms of the inspection in local findings, the the network staff for operational capacity. Was also assessed, the issue of the customer services in the area was also reviewed and contingency planning was also verified. And then in terms of the objections that we've received from um Ekuruleni. Um it was the claims that the areas within the municipal municipal supply area. And they're providing services to adjoining adjoining areas. And they were concerned about the engagement process. And they indicated that they've got an they're sending an application of about sixty M V A to supply for the consolidated development. So we did respond to that objection where we conducted a meeting with. Um city of Ekuruleni to discuss these objections and work toward resolving the concerns that were raised. So the issue of the municipal demarcation was clarified eh as per the NERSA rules. Eh that's, excuse me, that clearly sti- um stipulate that it does not create exclusive supply rights. For brownfield um areas. And the other part was the this area being in the brownfield area of influence that was. Um clarified as well and we also provided the. Multiple engagement that we had dating from twenty twenty one. And then eh then over and above that, we had a site visit, another inspection in local where we had NERSA. And we also had city of Ekuruleni to reassess the supply area. And address all issues that are raised relating to the existing network's location. And in terms of the sixteen B application that we received, um this application was not processed. As Eskom already initiated an application process with NERSA to include um this Windmill Park development and the. Eskom area of supply. And in addition, there was also some moratorium that was imposed by Eskom on on all series application for their own usage residential. Due to credit management um issues. So in terms of um conclu- conclusion. Uh we have clearly outlined Eskom's application to amend eh this Windmill Park. Resident residential development and should be included in the distribution license. And the evidence that I've presented, it shows that inclusion of this Eskom's inclusion. In Eskom Schedule One is the most practical beneficial option for the residents and. Regulator in the overall electricity network. Eskom has also demonstrated that we've got technical, operational. And we are ready to support this existing infrastructure and we've got proven capability. And all the stakeholder concerns that were raised um through the well. I mean during the objections, we addressed those concerns and um we had eh. We are here for the public eh participation and we also site inspections as well. So in summary, I'll say that Eskom, we are best positioned to supply this Windmill Park. Uh safely, efficiently and also responsibility. And thus inclusion of Windmill Park license amendment is actually um justified. Yeah, thank you.
But I thank you very much, um I would like to invite the members of the regulator to ask questions. Today I'm joined by eh Madame Semane Only on the call, so I would like Madame Semane, if you have any questions to ask. Do you have any questions, Madame Semen? Can you check Mister Mabunda?
Okay. Chair, eh Madame Semen is currently experiencing some technical difici- tech- technical difficulties eh eh at the moment.
Yeah. Alright, no problem. Oh okay, but I see that eh she is eh still on the call, alright. Maybe from my side, um just to eh eh get an understanding first as to what um. What is the rationale for Eskom to be eh to be including this area? I mean the main commercial rationale or economic rationale. Um apart from all of the issues of safety and all of that, what is the um um rationale for. Eskom to be interested in this area and wanted to include and service this area? Um eh especially given the 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 objection from city of um Ekuruleni. That's the first question. The second question that I would like to understand. Is eh Eskom's ability eh to, you know, to 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 service this area. Um eh given in the past, you know, some of the sort of the 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 challenges eh that were reported to NERSA. Um regarding the quality of service and maybe some outages and and things like that. I just want to check maybe from Eskom's eh ability and capacity eh to service this area. I think that that part for us is 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 going to be important. If you can um explain to us what is it that is eh that you that you're going to do differently. Eh in order to make sure that this area is serviced and the quality of service is up to standard, up to scratch. And eh if you can also provide a plan that is showing how Eskom is going to um eh provide a service here. And then the third thing is just on the eh on the consultations um. With eh the city of Ekuruleni, just to understand where things stand as of today. With regards to the cooperative eh discussions. Um between yourself Eskom as well as the city of Ekuruleni with regards to eh this area. And then lastly, how does the tariff compare, the tariff that you're going to charge compares with. Um the tariff that is charged in the adjacent areas? Eh if you can just deal with those four, it's four issues from my side. Um I will come back to Madame Semen if eh she's still um experiencing some challenges. But those are the four questions that I would like to um pose um and or understand from you. Thank you.
Alright, um thank you for that, amen. In terms of the the rationale um for us to in to include this area in our supply. Eh in our landable supply area is that we're looking at mostly the operational safety. In that um we are trying to duplicate, you know, the. The the networks um crossover. And also in terms of the the cost, we are avoiding the the double. Um double investment in terms of infrastructure um.
I think I'm asking about, I think I'm asking the 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 question, I I see it because it's something else is ancillary. The the issues of safety and the cost and whatnot, but from the perspective of Eskom running a business. So what I'm interested in is to find out the commercial interest. What is your rationale, the commercial rationale? What is it that Eskom as a strategy, business strategy. Decided that this is the area that we believe eh would enhance our strategy as a business. To 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 service this area. What is the commercial rationale? Thank you.
Okay, in terms of the commercial um rationale, it has to do with increasing our customer base. Of course, in that we'll be able to collect um more revenue. In order to increase the sales within our um within Eskom.
So so what is there in this area? Is it an area of sort of growth? Are you viewing this as an area of growth? And what 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 is there that you believe would um enable Eskom to achieve that eh that objective?
Yes, it's it's a it's a res- residential development. As 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 we have received the the development um details. So it is a residential development and hence we say acquiring these additional customers will also. Increase our revenue base.
Okay, you can proceed to the three other questions.
And then in terms of the other questions in terms of Eskom's eh ability and the issue of the. Quality and capacity, um so this area, it's we do have Ginetta, C and C. And um Step Down, Janiston and s- and Fosloras as you you will see on the screen. So we do have the adequate um resources. In terms of the 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 numbers, um those were listed on our application. And um oh we do have the capacity in terms of like um technical. Um capacity in that we we've got enough resources and um we also have. Um adequate.
Specifically, I'm asking about specifically because those other resources you do have, but. Now for adding this other area because it means now it will tap on your eh existing resources. So you, all I need is to and you eh is to for you to respond as to what kind of arrangements and measures. That you have put in place to make sure that you will have the capacity because you are adding. So now for this one, surely there must have been something that has been put in place as to how you are going to fulfill. Your your duties in terms of the license to service this area. So it's not a question of generalization of what Eskom, other capabilities Eskom has in other areas and so forth. It it's not a given thing, it's a thing of motivating eh before the regulator. With regards to the capacity that you have and that you have lined up for purposes of servicing this area, that is the question, please.
Okay, so in terms of the resources um that we have, we had we have really looked at. The current number of um the staff that we have in the area. And we 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 also ensure that all the vacancies that um we that were. That we had were in the process of um filling them, just to ensure that we do have adequate manpower. And then in terms of our our systems as well, we did look at um our operational. Um systems that we have in place to see if it is adequate that we'll be able to easily add. Um this development and there will not be any hiccups. So our systems and manpower, it's actually adequate for us to be able to service this additional. And customers. Um ma'am? Um Chair? Um colleagues, am I still audible?
Yes, you are audible ma'am, perhaps the chairperson is struggling.
Hello? Yeah, I can't hear you, I don't know what's going on. Alright, um Madame Semen, you don't have questions? Thank you Eskom for your presentation, I will then go to city Ekuruleni because I I can't hear you. I don't know if you are saying something, you are on mute.
Sure. Um so Richard, was there any anything else? Um, so, Richard, was there any anything else?
Hello? Colix? Hello? I c- I can hear you. I can hear you.
Oh, okay. I don't know what happened to the chair there. Um, Colix is there? I don't know if, check? Um, chairperson?
Miss, Miss Palanda, eh it's 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 Sunday, live from NASA. Uh, please just hold on. Uh, I think the chair and and perhaps our our committee secretaries. Eh are having issues with connectivity. Uh, let me just reach out to them and find out uh what's the cause of the. There's of the disruption, that's.
My apologies, I think I've just eh had some some challenges with eh eh with the the connection here. Alright, thank you, Escom, for for your for your for your um for your presentation. Eh but what would like to eh eh to get from you is um. Is 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 more details with regards to the you you your readiness. Eh for um and 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 also the resources that will be eh deployed. To make sure that the service is eh is so that the area is serviced as it should. Eh if you could eh eh provide some additional explanation on that in writing in the next seven days, please. You are muted, so I'm struggling.
Okay, yeah, um, tha- thanks um for that, ma'am. We will do that. But if I can just add, um, we do have um staff that is currently servicing this area as I I have indicated. And um, just to also capacitate to ensure that they do have work. Um, that they are able to to continue working. And then the issue of the the tariff we'll still provide in writing, but we do follow the 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 NEPSA's um approved. Um tariffs that we have. And yeah, we will provide the detailed plan as to how are we gonna. Capacitate this area. Chair?
Alright, thank you very much. Now, we we understand that we will we will consider then the information that is before us. At this point, I would like to thank Escom and move on to um the city of Egoruleni.
Uh, morning, chair, and everyone on call. Uh, morning, chair, and everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, uh, once again, I think, uh, good morning, Mister Mulaudze. I think the the chair is struggling again. Um, please just hold on again and let's let's see if we can try get her back on the line. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
What's what's going on with them, I think, today? Alright, um, sorry, eh, sorry, sir, I I just have the. The issue of the of the of connection eh here, so I'm trying to just sort that out. My apologies, Walter. I'm 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 actually in. I was trying to just um. Deal with the issue of changing the devices. Alright, um, we've got Mister Innocent Mulaudzi eh for the city of Egoruleni. Mister Mulaudze, do you have any objections in taking eh the oath?
Uh, no objection.
Okay, thank you very much. May you please raise your right hand? Eh, do you solemnly declare that the evidence you're going to provide to the panel is the truth and the whole truth?
Uh, I do, chair.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and your designation at the city of Egoruleni for the record.
Uh, thank you, chair. Uh, my name is Innocent, uh, Muraudze. I'm the divisional head. Uh, within the energy department responsible for planning a new project. Thanks, chair.
Thank you very much. You may start then with your eh presentation. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, chair. Uh, can you confirm if you are able to see my presentation, chair?
From my side, um, I just want to check, eh, Mister Mapunda, can you see it? I see only Mister Alimutu per mark. Please deactivate your camera, sir. Madame Semen, are you able to see the presentation? Madame Semen?
Chair, chair, um, the struggle with Mrs. Semen seems to continue. Um, we are trying, we are trying to assist them.
I will just check it on Convin. It is on Convin, right? Because I can't see it on the thing on the screen.
The presentations, both of them, they are on Convin, eh, chair.
That's fine. I'll refer to the Convin. You may start, Mister Muraudze.
Okay, uh, uh, on, can can you see it now?
Yes, I'm able to see it now. You may proceed, yes.
Ah, thank you very much. Alright, chair, um. I think our 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 submission is basically around the township development. Uh, which, uh, according to our records, uh, the township is named Eldavek Extension Ten. Um, we are going to demonstrate as a city that uh we are also in a better position. To obviously supply uh the area in question. Uh, without uh any waste of time, I think that the first slide there uh basically talks to. Uh, the city being in a position uh uh and authorized to supply. Uh, the proposed windmill park, uh, which is known in terms of our books as Eldavek Extension Ten town eh township. Uh, I think the the bullet there eh 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 in bold, chairperson, is just to indicate that. Uh, in terms of our books, the. As Eldavek eh Extension Ten. So we'll also demonstrate the alignment in terms of the NERSA license uh condition. And also respond in terms of uh issues that were obviously raised by the stakeholder, in this case being uh Escom. Alright, um, moving on to the uh next slide. Uh, I think we're trying to indicate um, uh, chairperson, the location of 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 the. Uh, the development itself, uh, which in terms of our area, uh, it 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 uh. Falls under the Brackpan area, which is still supplied by the city. And I think the next slide, we're trying to highlight, chairperson, all the surrounding areas. That are adjacent to that specific um township development, which are obviously. Um, supplied by the city itself. And then um, we'll also indicate, uh, I think on the next bullet, eh, that um. There was a a sixty M V A application that was uh put through to Escom at some point. And uh, eh, we will also, I think, just to note again, um. Uh, chairperson, it's, uh, there was another application. In terms of the Heldevik Extension Ten, eh, so over and above the sixty M V A. That was uh eh eh placed with with uh Escom. Um, the next slide, chairperson, is just an aerial view in terms of. Of what is happening on the ground. Uh, you will see that um, the um. There's there is the Heldevik uh 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 extensions, there's also the Dell Park extensions. Eh, that are obviously supplied by uh by the city of Egoruleni. Uh, on my pointer there, uh, on my pointer there, it's a um. The proposed substation that will eventually eh supply eh at the time. Eh, the Held- uh Heldevik extensions and and the other surrounding areas there. Uh, that's the sixty M V A that I indicated on the presentation. Uh, but uh you will recall that I also said there was uh uh another application, which was. Uh, eh triggered by the Dell Park extension eh. Extension developments. And with that, we were proposing a a a newer substation. Which will obviously cater for the existing sixty M V A and the new Dell Park eh extension. Which will just be, if you can see my cursor, at the corner there of Dell Park. And um, and the new eh eh township, which is. Uh, which we are obviously eh eh trying to eh get NERSA to assist in terms of supplying that. Uh, if I move to the next uh slide, it's just to indicate our engagement. Uh, between the uh Escom and ourselves. Uh, I think we 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 just want to put it on record that the sixty M V A substation. In terms of of NERSA's record would have been eh recorded as Heldevik Substation. Uh, which talks to the um, the sixty M V A. And and you you can see that eh eh, chairperson, there were um engagement in terms of that. Eh whereby there was also a need to relocate the 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 um. The proposed eh substation to a newer eh 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 position. Eh, which is almost one point five kilometer closer to the bo- eh boxback. And eh developments, which also include the Heldevik Extension Ten. And then I think on the engagement, again, uh, this one was recorded the twenty fifth of May, twenty twenty one. Eh, Escom indicated that they they want to uh obviously supply the area. And then we were also eh not in agreement with that. And later on, the with the newer application, which include the Dell Park extensions. Eh, which was on the eh, where wherein we sent an application. A response was then sent back eh to us, eh, chairperson, to say we are waiting the finalization. Uh, in terms of NERSA, because at the time now, eh at this point in time now, Escom has already indicated that they will want to. Supply the 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 area. Uh, moving further on, I think there the slide is just to outline the um licensing framework. Uh, you know, where NERSA mandates clear supply boundaries between municipality and Escom. Uh, we are also trying to eh give um a definition in terms of the brownfield and in binfield. And and we, we are saying in terms of this eh eh development. Uh, in line with the eh brownfield eh conditions, eh COE is already closer to the area. And then um, we're also saying, I think, one of the condition in the NERSA is you. You will want to avoid duplication. You will also need to ensure cost-effective infrastructure. And also protect your customers' interest. So those are the things that eh I think the city. When when approaching this was looking at. If we move to the uh next slide, we basically saying. Why are we uh saying we are in a better eh position to 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 supply? Uh, we are saying the area itself, eh, chairperson, it's surrounded by the majority of um. Uh, the COE supplied areas. You could you could have seen from the Escom shed. Uh, 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 um, a picture that a majority of 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 that. Uh, areas there are actually the COE eh eh supplied area. And and y- y- you can al- already see, chairperson, that an island is going to be created. Eh, if we proceed with this application. And then uh in terms of investment, chairperson, we are saying COE has already eh. Eh, paid for in a sixty M V A intake eh eh point, which obviously was planned to eh. Eh, service the existing and also eh to cater for the future in terms of what needs to happen there. We are saying in terms of operational efficiencies, let's avoid dual supplies in in one geographical eh block. You know, again, in in terms of of planning and billing eh and 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 customer service and maintenance. Eh, this will ensure a seamless eh eh process, eh, chairperson. And then in terms of the legal and and regulatory compliance, uh, we are saying eh, this is a brownfield. Eh 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 supply area, again, which is obviously surrounded by the COE eh 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 networks. And we are saying we are in a better position to then supply that specific area, chairperson. Why we shouldn't allow another entity or or a supply area to. To supply within the 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 area in question. We are saying it's it's unnecessary cost, eh, chairperson. And we are creating a confusion. Eh, which will obviously escalate to dispute and delays and which we might delay the developments in the area. It also undermines the municipal revenue base, eh, which affects long-term sustainable. Eh sustainability in terms of several eh service level eh eh delivery, I mean service delivery. Eh, which is one of the mandates of 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 local business. We are going to create different tariff structures, eh, chairperson. That alone, I don't have to eh tell the chairperson what will happen to that. We we're going to have eh angry eh community members eh because of the different structures in the same area. Uh, the next slide, eh, chairperson, is just to indicate um. An overview in terms of the developments that will obviously eh come uh eh in this area. I think this is the proposed eh mega project eh that has been um. In terms of what we have eh received eh through our city planning department. And and we are saying, chairperson, we we understand the the issues around boundaries that are created. Uh, by, in this case, a railway line. But do we do we want to create confusion? Do we want to create community uncertainty eh in terms of tariff structures? Do you want to eh undermine eh the the revenue base of of the municipality eh in in this regard? How will then municipality be able to service its people if we then continue to suppress? Eh, its 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 revenue base? In terms of our recommendation, eh, chairperson, I mean, the city, it's 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 it's. Feels that this is a a win to all, eh, chairperson. We are saying. The the this is a eh an area that the city can supply with no fail. We are also saying, it's a win. We are also saying, it's a win-win to all, Chaperson. Eskom will come with its bulk point and the city will then distribute. As 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 a thing that we always do in terms of our agreement with Eskom. We are also saying, in terms of the brownfield, uh uh uh. We are also capable and in terms of the brownfield condition, we are also in a better position. Uh to then supply uh this specific uh area, Chaperson. Um in conclusion, Chaperson. We are saying, uh 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 the brownfield uh 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 extension. Of this area can still be supplied by the city, I think we're just emphasizing the brownfield uh issue then. We've already invested in terms of us paying Eskom for that intake. And for cost efficiency, regulatory compliance and sustainable municipal service delivery. The city needs to be confirmed to be the supplier. To ensure that we we maintain the uh the regulatory compliance, a reliable uh uh supply. And also align with the spatial and service delivery plans that are within the city. Just also to mention, Chaperson, is uh uh cities as a whole, not Agurulene alone. They are going through a transition uh in partnership with uh with with National Treasury. In trying to make sure that those infrastructure in the different cities are. Are are maintained and are well looked after, you know? So that that transition is at its uh final stage, Chaperson. And with that, we believe that uh the city will be able. To to maintain and retain with its existing staff members. There might be a need uh to to add there and there, but uh the city. Is ready to service this uh 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 area. And we must also understand that this is not an overnight thing, Chaperson. Uh as we transition, uh uh things will happen, improvements will will happen. And at the same time, the development will be happening on the other side. And the city, at the time when this development is developed fully. It will have fully transitioned in terms of what needs to happen currently. And it will be then ready to take over uh this particular area. I thank you, Chaperson.
Thank you very much, uh Mr. Mraudze. Um uh let me check if my colleague has any questions. Uh Madam Samani, any questions from your side on the presentation?
No, no, Madam.
Alright, thank you. Uh let me just find out, uh Mr. Mraudze, um as to. Uh why the municipality, if this is an area that forms part of the. Surrounding townships uh and uh and an area where. You have the infrastructure already, as you indicated. Why um have you not um um serviced the area? Why have you not uh started servicing the area? Um uh and it's it's uh up until this time that another distributor has has now. Shown interest and earmarked the area for uh its own supply and service. Uh um you know, um residence uh in that area. May I find out in terms of uh your plans all along, why was the area not serviced? If there is already in the, there is there's already infrastructure? Where is something that shows that all along this has been the plan to service the area? And why it was not um uh serviced? So this is the first thing. The second thing is that um what what is confusing me uh here is that Eskom claims. That this is um uh obviously, this is a brownfield, right? Um and that they also have infrastructure uh in that area. Uh the city also is claiming that it has infrastructure in that area. And in fact, it could be an extension of um what's it, Heldervek, um what you call it? Heldervek um extension ten. Um how how do we, how do we prove this? I ob- obviously, from our side, we did not, uh from part of the physical inspections that took place. But uh what exactly, what do we take out of this? Uh if both parties uh claim that they have infrastructure, you know, running. Um sort of uh through or adjacent to this area. But they are not yet servicing the area. If they are not servicing the area, what 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 was preventing the municipality? From uh from from uh doing so? And then, thirdly. Uh I would like to also just find out about the capacity of the municipality. Uh in um in servicing this area. The same question that I asked Eskom, because at the end of the day. Um it's one thing to be interested in um uh you know, improving the revenue. And uh and and all that, but uh what about the customers that are in the area? Who will then uh be in a position to service this area? And to provide quality service to the customers? And um and 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 being cost effective, I think those are things that are also just important. Uh for us, and how long it will take. Uh to firstly, uh uh put the infrastructure that will service the customers in the area. And also when there are issues um of supply outages or whatever issue that will require. Uh the services of the uh distributor. Um how long it will take to respond to the challenges of outages or any other challenge? And get uh the electricity supplier restored in the area. So would like to also just understand in terms of the capabilities and the time of response. Should there be problems that arise in the area? How long it will take and what resources then? Do you have to ensure that um uh the response will be quick enough? So that it does not place um the residents at a disadvantage? Those are the questions from my side. Thank you.
Uh no, thanks, Chaperson. I just want to put this on a. Presentation mode. Okay, thank you. Alright, Chaperson, I think your your first question relates to. Why haven't we uh. Uh why haven't we serviced the area? Uh if 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 we uh we we solely believe that this is our area. Um Chaperson, you you will know that um as municipality or as Agurulene. We don't have our own, either your transmission, uh substation. Uh let alone a a generating uh substation. So we we obviously depend on Eskom. Um uh as the they obviously have those capabilities in terms of transmission. And to certain extent, generation. An intention was there, Chaperson. Uh hence, there was the first point of sixty M V A that was applied for and paid for. And to show that we also had uh intended to obviously supply this new area. When we went back to uh Eskom to say, uh you know, hang on. Our sixty M V A that we applied for. Uh it's it's not gonna be enough to cater for. Uh at the time, there was the Dell Park extension twenty five, which is adjacent. Uh I'll 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 just move on my uh my cursor there. Uh which is adjacent. And our position, the new position that we we were obviously proposing uh with Eskom. Was just in the border of Heldervek extension and and the Dell Park uh extensions. Uh that if you can see that, Chaperson, you will see that. Then it then puts the city at a better position to then. Uh uh even supply this proposed uh uh mega uh mega project. Which uh obviously and Eskom is now uh 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 contesting. And 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 uh to show that we 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 um. We 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 have been interested in the area. And why maybe someone might ask, why didn't you go to um uh to Esko- I mean to NERSA? Uh for that reason, it was purely because the city believes the area belongs to them. And hence, there was no need in terms of us approaching uh NERSA to extend. Uh uh the license boundaries. It's now that Eskom is coming to say, uh we also need to. Uh supply the area that we said, huh, no, guys, we 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 told you. We said to you, if you do that, we will obviously not.
Mr. Mraudze?
Yeah.
Uh what made the city to believe that the area belongs to them?
Alright. No, thanks, uh uh Chaperson. If if you recall, uh on the Eskom presentation, you could see. That the area in question. It's sort of making an island within the supply area of the city. So with that, it's surrounded by the city networks. With that, the city then, maybe it's the not the right uh ri- right word to use, Chaperson. But uh 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 felt that the area is within its. Uh it's surrounded by its network. Hence, uh 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 the intention to supply or the intention to go to Eskom was never there at the time. But only when Eskom went there, I said, okay, do do. Guys, we told you, we requested in a a a a point. Which you are now saying you can't process because obviously you are interested in the area. So it's because of the surrounding uh 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 Chaperson, the surrounding of the network.
But all along, who was then, because it's a brownfield area, who was then providing services? Who cared about providing services in this area? Yes, you've got your infrastructure, which you you wish you are now arguing that it it will be convenient. For the city to 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 service the area, but uh we then you've got residents that are not being serviced. Right? So at what point will they, wo- would these resi- residents going to be to be serviced? And why were not, were they not serviced all along?
Uh Chaperson, this is an open land. Uh I don't think, Chaperson, I can put infrastructure on an open land. But only when a a a a an application comes to me. Uh I I will then start planning, because there there's an intention to develop. I'll then start planning together with the developer uh to say. We will assist you in terms of the network in the area. You know, it's 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 a no man's land, if I have to tell you. The 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 connection that is referred to as uh eleven K V is a line that used to go to a farm. Which is no longer there, Chaperson. So 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 as you can see, I cannot put infrastructure where there's nothing. But only when there's an intention to 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 develop the area. Either by the city or the private partnership, then the city will then have to include that. In terms of uh either the I D Ps and all the all those processes that unfold, Chaperson. Um. Uh the second question, uh Chaperson, is. How do we prove that uh the municipality has the capacity? Um Chaperson, the municipality, it's it's has the capacity. Yes, in future, there might be a need to add more resources. Uh obviously, you'll understand, I I wouldn't have idling resources. I will have adequate resources that talks to the infrastructure that is there. But as I've also indicated, Chaperson, that I'm in a process of transitioning. Together with the uh National Treasury, which is a confirmed thing, by the way. Uh in that transitioning, one of the most critical part is to enhance your resources. And we are saying, through this transitioning, we are going to enhance and make sure that. Such areas which is like Windmill Park and other areas that are falling within the. Uh the municipality get adequate resources. And this is not an overnight proj- uh 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 mega project, Chaperson. This is going to still be phased out over the years. And as we are phasing out, as we understand. The 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 plans of the development, that's when we add more resources. Uh because you you will understand, your resources will eventually, to a certain extent. Uh talk to what you get and how much of that can you use for your resources? And 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 how much are you going to collect uh uh in terms of a revenue base from the 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 same people? Another thing that I have to emphasize, Chaperson, is um. We we don't want to, uh 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 I want to use a word, uh a tariff structure clash. A person living on the other side of of the uh uh railway station.
That's my day.
It's 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 actually uh uh getting electricity at this uh whatever. And the other one on the other side is getting electricity at this uh whatever. Are we then trying to alienate people for that? Let's not do that, Chaperson. We are going to create chaos. So we 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 don't want to do that. As the city, we are saying, let's not create chaos. And let's 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 maintain uh uh uh. Uh what is within the city and what the city can control. And we are not saying Eskom, go away. No, we are saying Eskom. Provide us with a bulk, we'll distribute, you still get your revenue base. And we also get our revenue base. Everyone wins at the end of the day, Chaperson. And then, again, uh we we are going. Uh you are talking about issues around the response time. Maybe before I step on that, Chaperson, it's important. It's important that all the tariff approvals get to be advocated. And uh 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 public participation, it's 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 it happens. So that when people uh are presented with tariffs. They are then uh they knew what they are uh 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 going to. To 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 be hit with. So so it's not something that the city will just overnight. Uh 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 say, this is your tariff and whatnot. This must be tested. It must be a market uh related tariff. And then which will obviously be approved by yourself, Chaperson. To say, this is the tariff that the 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 residents will be able to uh to use. Because it's it's cost effective, it's affordable and 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 and. You know, and in terms of, how will we deal with the responses of of outages and all that? Chaperson, uh we we have service level uh agreement. We have service level agreement and one of the things that we we are doing as a as a city is through this transitioning is. We are making uh uh our response time uh 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 realistic. And by that, I mean, is we we are going to align our uh S L As with obviously your uh. Your N R S and all those uh 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 documentations that are out there in terms of 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 response time and whatnot and whatnot. And again, through this transitioning, uh uh when we have. I mean, this talks to what I was talking about, that. The resource will obviously be uh 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 put by what is on the ground. What am I servicing? That will obviously say uh to me. These resources uh 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 will be able to service what's on the ground. And then if you add, similar thing will do, will happen. You will then extend in terms of your resource allocation. And make sure that you've got adequate people to respond to your outages. To respond to your issues, meter issues or whatever issues that might happen in that particular uh development. Thanks, Chaperson.
Thank you. Thank you for the for for the for the responses. Um as you know, I mean, uh this is um uh we we have seen a lot of protests. So it's also important for us, because some of the the those things, um are things that we. Do take into consideration uh from our side as the regulator. Uh from our side as the regulator, especially the, uh the fact that one of the requirements um. Is to demonstrate the administrative abilities, technical abilities and so forth. So hence the question about the capabilities, es- especially in, in light of the protests, you know, that. Um have been taking place and also maybe some outages that take place. Hence, now if uh there's another area that uh um that the city says is interested in. It becomes a imperative to then find out about uh how the city. In as much as it would like to expand in other areas. But to what extent does the city then capacitate itself to be able to service other areas? Hence, we asked um um the, the, the question itself and uh and also would have wanted to get. You know, also some certainty, as you say, that you also, you know, coming up, we're coming up with plans to have this area under the city. Or being serviced uh by the city. Um it, 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 it did not, your answer did not touch on. Um how long it will take the city to even get this area developed? And to be able to lay the, get the necessary infrastructure that could service that area. So it's important, the timing of it, how long it will take, the capacity that it will have, to be able to do those kind of things. Uh financial abilities, you know, technical abilities and so forth. And then also the time it will take to respond to challenges. You've touched just to say that. You will make sure that you've got resources um uh to attend to problems. Uh and uh but for us, it's important, you know, the timing of the response and stuff like that. But those are the things um that, if I don't know, uh you've just touched uh on, on, on general. And the response, um but not touching really on. Um on, on specifics that could assist the energy regulator to get a better sense. Of how ready the city is, or how capable the city is, to the extent that the city contends that. It already has some infrastructure that is there, therefore it had applied from, from Eskom. And the city should did get maybe, you know, uh the things that it has applied for. The city appears to be in a position to service the area. So I was trying to get a sense on that, but I'm not getting it from the response that you have provided. I'm not sure if you will have a way of making us understand that. Please over to you, Mister Mraulzi.
No, thanks, uh thanks, Chairperson. Yeah, but I, I, I think you, you, you are uh quite right. Uh I didn't obviously, uh in my uh response, uh touched on the timelines. Uh for a simple reason, um you know, this is, these are. In, in, uh in most cases, um uh private developments. And uh a portion of it might be uh government because it's a, it's a mixed. Uh uh development. And wi- with that, those type of, of developments, Chairperson, you will then enter into a. Um a service level agreement with the developer. And agree on what needs to happen, who needs to do what, by when, and how. At this point in time, uh Chairperson, i- 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 it, it, it won't, it would be ill advised of me to say. Uh these are the timelines because I'll, for a simple reason, we, 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 our application have been stopped. Obviously, the discussion with the developer also are halted. So, 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 so there are no discussions at this point in time. But if you are then go, if I, I was given a, a, a. A timeline to say by this point, the substation will be ready. Then we could then activate our developers and say, Eskom has confirmed that the, the substation will be ready by this time. Uh let's resume our discussion. And all those discussions will then form part of your service level agreement. Where everyone knows what needs to happen, by when, and how. And which also goes back to, 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 to my previous question to say. I, I cannot go in and start laying cables without seeing the, uh the, the full picture and plans. Of, of the developer. Uh ye- yes, there was an intention, but obviously those discussions were halted. Because of our discussion with Eskom. But at this point in time, it will, like I said, it will be ill advised. And remember, I'm under oath. I cannot also. Uh start speculating on dates which are, are not here, not there. So what I'm basically saying is, once. Uh an application has been confirmed and we are moving, we are in traction. All those things will form part of the service lev- level agreement and every party will then do what they need to do. And then in terms of the transitioning, Chairperson, we are on the first, in fact, that process has started. We are on the first year of transitioning, where all the uh paperwork and everything are put in place. To make sure that uh we then start with the uh required transitioning. And also understanding when are we doing what, by who, uh 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 at what particular time. National Treasury has given us twelve years to transition. And our plan is on the third year, we will then be starting to put in more resources. Which are ob- obviously dependent on what we have on the ground. I cannot just start hiring people with uh the anticipation. There must be a service level agreement with the developer. And you are then able to expand based on what is already agreed upon. Like I said, I don't want to have a staff complement that I can't pay. I do, I would rather have a staff complement that will be supplemented with what I collect. And obviously, you will know that you, 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 you base your resource allocation. Uh with what you have on the ground. So yes, Chairperson, you are right. I didn't give specific because there's a process that has been halted. And we need to obviously move from that point on. And then once we move from that point and then and agree on, on what needs to happen. I'll then tell you, this is the pro- program of action. W- the city will do one, two, three. And on the other hand, the developer will do one, two, three, and then we move in that end. Thanks, Chairperson.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much. So from your side, um you are saying that what it, what is it? Okay, let me not put it to it, let me not um uh summarize it, let me just put it as a question. Uh so what would it take the city to be able to lay the necessary infrastructure? Uh so that it can service the area?
We need a confirmation from Eskom capacity side and the agreed point. And then signed level agreement between ourselves and the developer. So that everyone else know what to do by when and how.
And, and you still don't know uh when those things would, uh would actually happen, right? You, you depend on them?
Yeah, I, I, in this case, I depend on Eskom, yes.
Okay. Alright, we do have uh there's some questions as we indicated at the beginning of this, uh the, 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 the hearing that. Um stakeholders may ask questions of clarity to the presenters, but they will do so via their panel members. So there is a question uh from the stake, from the members of the public that have joined this hearing. Um the question is uh about the fact that uh you stated that the cost for the electricity. Um for electrifying, for electricity of this project is going to. You stated that it is going to cost more for customers if they supply, if you supply the electricity. But at the same time, the city is talking about sustainable service delivery. Would it, uh would it be better for customers to have access to the most affordable energy? That is the question that is asked by a stakeholder. So that issue of cost. And the fact that how, what it will take you in terms of cost. Uh so the issue of service, uh sustainable service delivery, but at what cost? And how that would impact customers, given the cost that is required. Were you, are you able to respond to this question?
Yeah, thanks, Chairperson. Yeah, I, I think the submission by the um participant. Uh probably they missed my point. My issue on the cost was. If both the city and Eskom are electrifying adjacent area. These might be talking to added cost. Remember, I was talking about a substation that will be built. Uh adjacent to the development, which is just below, if you remember my map, below. Eldervake uh developments and so at the corner of Eldervake and, and Dalpark. So if we are then going to say Eskom supplies that mega part, then it means Eskom. Will have to cool another transmission line, or I don't know, whatever the plans Eskom. And put another s- uh substation, wherein a new substation at a new land. Uh that to me, that's unnecessary cost. Because already, we are saying as a city, this substation that we are, we are applying to you. Which is at the corner of Eldervake Developments and the Dalpark, will be able to support this new development. To me, that's a cut on a cost for the second substation. And then I think again, the, the, that's the first part. So I think it must be. Uh uh the, 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 the. Uh the public member must just get that strike. The cost issue was more on us putting a substation and also Eskom putting a substation. But in terms of the tariff, obviously tariffs go through a rigorous uh process. Of being you, you public participating and whatnot and whatnot. And eventually being approved by, by NERSA. So that will be the process. All our tariff structure go through that rigorous uh 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 process to make sure that they are cost effective. Sustainable and, and obviously people are able and, and affordable. So, so, so the, 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 the tariff issue will still go through the right channel of approval. To make sure that the people still get the um uh the, 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 the. Uh cost effective uh tariffs. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Um thank you very much for your, for the responses, uh Mister Mraulzi. And, and also thank you for making the, 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 the time. Uh for um for appearing before us uh in order to uh provide your perspective. And um uh and the plans that the municipality has with regards to the same area that. Eskom um is applying to NERSA that it be included in schedule one of its um uh license. Uh we thank you for that. Uh we will take your submissions into consideration. Uh before a final decision is taken by the energy regulator. At this point, I would like to then invite um Eskom as an applicant. Uh to provide um any sort of reply. Uh if on, you know, some, a few issues, uh if they have any uh thing to reply. To Eskom.
Alright, um thank you, Chairperson, um for the opportunity. Uh let me just start by saying, um the responses that are detailed earlier. And as requested that we provide more details, who, who will do that. And um I think of critical from Eskom's side, I think we should um put it up there that it's a very common occurrence. That we do have Eskom in the municipal um um jurisdiction area. So the issue of Branfield, it's NERSA clearly sp- state what are the rules. And in our belief, we are best positioned to um supply this area. Because we do have infrastructure in the vicinity, even transposing through the, the development. And the issue of demarcation we've um outlined. And as I emphasize that operational safety, it is very critical. We want to be saving lives out there by avoiding um uncoordinated um maintenance. On, on Eskom infrastructure. So with, with that said, um I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. And we will respond um as, as requested. Thank you.
Uh yes, okay, thank you very much. But what, what, what do, what do you expect NERSA to, to do? In the case of uh this objection by the municipality and the plans that uh they said they have put in place. And also the application or request that they made to Eskom. Which a request has not been responded to by Eskom. But also within the context of um sort of a cooperative governance. Um uh process uh that where the municipality and the uh and Eskom can. And, you know, get together and uh by the time the matter obviously gets decided by the energy regulator. At least the two parties would have had their sort of um uh uh discussions. Um in a cooperative manner, in a manner that also um would ensure that uh the consumer interest. Or the, the, the residents' interest um um are prominent in their discussions. And in trying to find each other and ensuring that service is provided uh to the area. Um because those are some of the things that we will have to consider. Uh if the, if, if the area is also within the municipal um boundaries. So how do you then propose that we deal with this, especially if you have not found each other? Especially also if the, the laws require that the, um that Eskom and the municipality. At least enter into uh some sort of discussions and try to find each other and resolve certain things. So that uh is also a key consideration. Therefore, how do you then propose that NERSA um handles this kind of application? If such things are not yet uh sort of in place and there's still an objection?
Alright, um thank you, Chair. I think um the issue of the cooperative governance in terms of us working together with the municipality. We've had um various engagement and I think for us, the point of departure was that. We received an application from um from the developer, um. From the developer who's developing the area. So and hence we started the issue of um, what is it? The application process so that we follow um a process that is tabled out there. And um above and above that, uh the other challenge that we, we had was the. The issues of um the payment, um which it's, it's, it's an, another matter that we currently. Engaging with Equilene in terms of the debt management at a larger scale. So and hence at one point, there was a decision to say, until we resolve these issues of um. Collection, then we, we need to not proceed with uh processing the application. So there was a moratorium. And then in terms of the sixty MVA that they referred to. The location, as um Mister Mraulzi has indicated, it was not initially close to the development. And hence the, the reapplication. So we do uh by all means try to work together and I think from Eskom's side. We consider public um safety as well. We ensure that in terms of the network, there is efficiency and it's, it's flexible in that. There is clear demarcation. And in this case, we do have the clear um demarcation. For, for the specific area. And um and hence, we, we believe that we are positioned. In better to um supply these, these customers. And um in, also in, in addition, uh regarding the. Yeah, regarding the issue of the new line um substation location, we. Yeah, regarding the issue of the new line um substation location, eh we, as I've indicated that. There is a both HV network, that is like your HV network, that transverses. So in terms of establishing a substation, we are already there at the premises. Of the development and the developer on the other side, it's waiting to proceed. Uh with the construction and they needed to sort out the issues of the power. Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Alright, thank you very much for your time, but we will still want to um eh hear, maybe in the next seven days, if you can supplement your response. Insofar as the cooperative governance and the laws that are governing that. Eh I hear you about eh you know, the preparations that you have made, the fact that you have been approached by the developer, the fact that you put a moratorium. Eh due to issues of eh non-payment and all of those challenges. But what is also important is that at least the there must be um a way of finding each other. And satisfy those requirements with regards to the cooperative governance. I think that is important. If you can um favor us with um your supplementary submission eh in that regard. As to how we should navigate eh our thought process insofar as um the cooperative governance is concerned. If you can kindly do so eh in the next um seven days, I will appreciate that.
Will do so, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, um ladies and gentlemen, we have come to the end of the um eh the hearing. As eh all the presenters um to for today have eh eh done their presentations and provided clarifications to the questions asked by the panel. Eh we appreciate their time, we appreciate eh the fact that they eh they were patient in um um um. Clarifying the issues for the panel's understanding. And we also thank eh all the stakeholders that are um that have attended eh those that are affected and have interest. In the matter that we are considering. I would also want to eh thank the members of the energy regulator, in particular Madame eh Semane eh for joining eh this hearing. And not eh leaving me alone eh as we don't need a coram, but eh just eh also the support and being here. So that um at least it is the two of us on top of the record that we have. When eh the decision is going to be eh eh taken eh by the energy regulator. Thank you very much eh to the stairs eh NERSA staff as well. The hearing is now adjourned. Eh the energy regulator will take all of the submissions, including the recording of eh eh today's proceedings. Eh into consideration eh before the final decision is made.